Hi. So, we're in the South Park. We just got to the conference room today. It's all self-funded, so it's very much in style. And they asked us to, you know, make sure that we can, like, have a good time. I stopped me in, something, I think, I think I lost it. Sheriff's Department.
Thank you.
All right, yeah, just, you hear me out? Who were the actual, so, I, I, I didn't see. The people have their, have their band, two-year singers, and, I think, the house band. I was, like, a lot of, you know, there were, there were, you know, two, three, four. They were getting their team, too. I'm not a fan of that. But, I don't know if you, I'm, I'm, right, so, I said. I'm, I'm, so bored, but, I had people, you know, we, right? You know, the lights off? Yes, it's good. So, we, 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 we have a lot of, you know? But, I, you know? Yeah, it's good. Really felt wholesome, like, people, you know, from the last round. Except for, for my, every, you know?
The nonprofits that we work with to be able to deliver these services to our residents. I think getting all that put together makes a lot of sense. And I feel confident that Chris and Ed have both thoroughly reviewed this and are on board with the changes that Rebecca's bringing forward to you tonight. Fred?
Can somebody call anonymously to report something like her and I are good neighbors and we get along, but I have a problem with her dog and I don't want to upset her. Can I call anonymously?
Absolutely. We'll do that a lot.
Okay.
And for that very reason, nobody wants to be the one that told on the neighbor. And so you can call anonymously. And then, but the next step is the challenge. And this is where we get into when they call dispatch is that somebody answered the line who realizes there is something you can do. And that's where we get into training. It's really, really important for everybody to, you know, once this is passed and we're happy to work with them. And Doug has actually formed an organization called HALO with other animal control officers throughout the state of Indiana, proactively got together and came up with a training program because there's just no formal training for animal control officers or law enforcement, period, on how to handle these situations. And so I know they'd be happy to help, but to go through this and just know that when you do call anonymously, you know, they can do a welfare check. You know, you can go in if you think there's imminent danger to an animal that's in a vehicle, they've been abandoned in a home, that happens a lot. And that was the case we recently had in Fishers was somebody just left and they left their pets in the house and it had been a couple of weeks. And so you have to believe there's no food or water. But it was, there was confusion about what law enforcement could do initially. And, you know, we can't just go in your house. You know, you can, you know, you can go in if you think somebody's in danger. And so, yes, I think that they should be able to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Rebecca.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Anything from Chief or Chris? Do you want to close anything out on this?
Thank you for your time. I do agree. And as 2012, we started with an animal control officer dedicated to just this. So we didn't feel it was necessary to proceed on a part-time basis. So we want to be able to have our officers include him. And I would say, I agree that training is continuing and needed in all aspects and areas. And I think this policy is a step in the right direction to the entire county being on the same page. So with that, if there's any questions, we can take them for sure. We average upwards of about 400 calls for service a year. In 2018 and 2019, I checked for Randy in particular. And some of these cases are meticulous. And I think there are a lot of questions about, you know, when, in particular, the case you're speaking about is the person was arrested and the dog was left in the house. And that leaves a very precarious position. So we do have to be trained up on those areas. So with that, there's no questions. I just want to let you know, I agree. I feel like we should proceed with it.
Thanks, Chief. Moving on tonight, before we move into exec session, five years ago, I'll give you a little historical context here. For a number of years, the city of Fishers did not necessarily participate in comprehensive planning. If you go back in the 90s and early 2000s, what they did instead was really they looked at their impact fee studies for parks and roads and sewer. And they really used those as their comprehensive plan along with their future land use map. And five years ago, we decided to embark upon what we would consider truly a comprehensive plan. And some of you might have been involved or were involved in that. Every five years, it was our anticipation that we would update that comprehensive plan. And we're now up against the clock to do that. And so Tony Begato is here tonight to talk to you about how we're going to kick off this process to engage all of you as well as our community in what we believe needs to be what's the next five years? What's the next chapter look like as we march towards 2040? So with that, Tony, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, good evening. Tony Begato, Director of Planning and Zoning. And as Scott outlined, this is just an intro into our kickoff for the update to the 2040 Plan. So just briefly, you know, what is a comp plan? It is really the citywide long-term policy and guide document for the city. Kind of sets the vision, the long-term vision that sees things at the 30,000-foot level. So you don't get into a lot of detail in the comp plan, but it's the overall goals and action items that how we want to develop as we go forward. It identifies policies and projects and the programs within the plan. And it's implemented over time. So again, this is a 2040 Plan. We give annual updates to the council and the plan commission as well as there was a plan to put five-year updates in place. And it's also the foundation for other city regulations. So one of the, you know, this is what guided the update to the new unified development ordinance and zoning code and also implements other plans throughout the city. So real quick history on the plan. It was started in 2015 with the steering committee and subcommittee. There was 24 meetings that took place with over 600 hours' worth of involvement with these committee members. We had 63 individuals involved, so 44 were committee members in the community, 16 city staff members, and then three consultants. There was a public survey done in the very beginning to see where the plan was going and the vision from the community side. And then there was five public meetings between the council and the plan commission. Some of them were just introduction. There was a public hearing and other introductions to first and second reading. And then there was two open houses. We had one here at City Hall and then one at Connor Prairie. It was adopted in June of 2016, and I came along April 2016. So I was right here at the end when we did those open houses and was here for the adoption. The progress report, again, we gave those every year. And then we're going to be embarking on our five-year update, which under this plan, we would want to adopt by June of 2021. And so with that, this update, it's not going to be as intensive as it was to adopt the whole plan, but there's going to be some work involved. The big thing we'll be doing first is reviewing the data from the implementation chapter. We have chapter six, which was a summary of all the action items from every individual chapter. And so we're just going to go over the amount of what's been done to date, what's still ongoing, what hasn't started, and then possibly what do we want to add? Because we've actually done quite a bit in the first five years. I've been pretty busy and we've been pretty busy citywide. It's very impressive to see the amount of work that was done in a 2040 Plan within five years. Then we're going to look at the special study areas for the land use. There was 11 to eight areas designated in the comp plan on the land use map as study areas. And we want to make sure that these are defined going forward in this update. We're going to look at updating our parks and open space plan as needed, our transportation and thoroughfare plan. And then we want to look at sustainability as well as public health into the code. So currently, sustainability is actually sprinkled into every section, but it's not necessarily highlighted, I think, in a way where it draws some of the importance that we believe it needs to go forward. So we're thinking in each chapter, we should have a subsection that focuses on sustainability related to safe land use, sustainability related to transportation, open space in parks. And then now with the incorporation of the Health Department and public health, when you talk about overall planning and walkability of a community and being vibrant, that really does play into public health. Implementing public art and other cultural events improves mental health from studies I've read. So it is important to actually kind of bring this in part of the discussion, I think, going forward as a community being vibrant. And so we want to also create a subsection potentially in each land use or each chapter that would also talk about the public health benefits and goals and action items for that chapter. We will have a steering committee that we've already put together and have one introduction meeting. And then from there, we're going to have four subcommittee meetings that the council will be a part of along with the steering committee members. So we're going to be focusing on future land use. Again, the study areas will be the most potential. Still looking at housing in neighborhoods. I think we've done a lot in architectural standards, but there's things we need to look at, continued investment into areas of Fisher that are older and will need to be maintained. And then looking at transportation and then again, parks and open space. The steering committee so far, the asterisks next to the name are people who were part of the comp plan process in 2016. So we have Cecilia Kobol, council president, Rich Block as a commercial real estate developer and former council member, Dr. Alan Boer for representing the school district and again was part of the process previously, Sean Kern, who's a local architect and also a current PUD committee member. I thought he would be important, especially in the housing and neighborhood discussions. Tom Dickey, who was a former community development director, redevelopment, real estate development, and was also part of the comp plan process in 2016. We have Eugene Johnson, who's involved in higher education and is on our nickel plate review committee. Steve Richards, who's also a real estate member developer, but he is in the Fall Creek area and represents the Fall Creek on the BZA and the plan commission. And then we have Marisol Sanchez, who's an attorney, and she's involved in our arts and cultural commission. And then Anderson, I always struggle with his name.
Shonrock?
Shonrock. He's an entrepreneur that was part of our housing and neighborhood committee on commercial standards. And then Amanda Waylu, who's been part of the arts master plan update as well as the nickel plate trail. And so that's the steering committee. And they'll be kind of the overarching body that we bring all the discussions from the subcommittees to before each meeting. And here's the timeline we're looking through. So we started back in March when COVID was hit to look at all the data side and all the preparation for the update. Now in September, we formed our sub steering committee and we're going to be working towards our public process, a series of seven to eight meetings, and then looking at adoption in, between March and June, and looking at public comment around April and as May. As I stated before, there's a data section we have to go over. So the current plan shows 149 actions and 72 of those have been complete. 54 are ongoing and 23 are not started. So as I stated, in five years, we've done a lot of work in this plan. But it also might be time to add new ones with a lot of them being complete. So for the council process, we were going to kick off. You'll be getting a meeting invite from Kerry. And we'll have a city council and staff dinner with an overarching vision and discussion for this update and where we're going. Then there'll be a subcommittee selection process where we'll let you pick and discuss which subcommittee you want to be a part of. And then we're going to have our first subcommittee meeting on December 3rd. And then we're going to review the update with the council one final time, either in another dinner meeting or some other fashion before adoption. But then we anticipate it being adopted in June of 2021. So with that, I'm open for any questions or comments? Yeah, I have hired the same consultant we used previously for consistency with the plan, who's kind of overseeing and coordinating with me over the process, but we are handing a lot of it through staff. It was a $34,000 contract under my existing budget today and it's already appropriated. Well, I mean, I don't see it as a major cost. We already have the contract already underway. So it's taken out of this year's budget that was based on last year's funding. So I have up to a certain amount to spend in professional services and that was within that budget.
This is a pretty significant reduction from the use the first go-around. We had a lot more professional services. This has reduced quite a bit. But I do think it's important for our comp plan to get underway. We have, because you have your road and parking impact, these studies we have to do per state statute that are coming up on being due. And that all feeds into this overall vision. So I do think it's time-sensitive for us to try to get this done. But I don't disagree that unlike last time, I think we have the state staff capabilities and experience now to do the vast majority of it in-house. And this is, I believe, a significant reduction in the amount of time and effort from an outside consultant. I think last time we had two consultants, even if I remember correctly.
Yeah, there was two different firms involved with three different individuals working, but this is only one. And I really, that's more for coordination over the first plan and kind of coordinating with me over the overall theme. But we have a lot of the planners and the other staff will work on this intensively. And the June adoption is a city timeline. So I mean, if there's some reason we need to extend a couple of months working through some things, it's not an issue either.
The question I do have for all of you to be thinking about is which committees are you interested or passionate in being a part of? You know, if there's one or multiple ones that each one of you would like to serve on. Obviously, as at that dinner, we can have that discussion on what you'd like to be a part of. You can be a part of as many or as few as you'd like to. Obviously, you'll, you guys will be the final say in the comp plan. And maybe that's one thing Tony maybe wasn't on the PowerPoint, but the final approval of the comp plan is with the city council. So the steering committee can help guide it, but ultimately, it's going to have to come before this body for final approval.
Yeah, that's one of the things that I want to make sure everybody understands. When you're doing these comprehensive plans and we're going after both state and funding mechanisms for certain things, whether it be transportation, whether it be parks, whether it be any of that, one of the things that the state has done over the last three or four years and maybe even less than that is a requirement to do a comp plan. So many of these communities, which I travel around to, trying to get them funding to do some of the things they want, they haven't even done a comp plan. So they're already behind the eight ball. So anything you turn in for them to go ahead and get funding does not get funded until they can check that box. So Fishers has always been ahead of the curve. So I'm absolutely 100% on board. We're continuing to do the comp plan on and ahead of schedule as always, only because it pays us back so tremendously. I think if we go back to Jeff Hill and even Jason Taylor's term and look at the amount of monies that we've been able to appropriate that may have had that checkbox checked because we've done that comprehensive plan, it means a world of difference in terms of the funding amounts that we can get. So keep that in mind as we go through.
I think if I could point to one area, and I know we're not here to get too far down the road with this tonight, but if you recall from those of you that were on the council at the last comp plan, there was probably 10 or 12 locations in Fishers where we just couldn't come to a conclusion on what the land use should be and we left it as a future study area. Those are, those are things that we really need to check off the list and say, this is what we think the land use should be. Because there are things that have caused points of confusion or concern at a policy level. So I think one of the goals, one of my overarching goals will be for us to say, okay, no, we're going to say that we think the future land use of this area is X. Doesn't mean we have to have a master plan down to the nth degree, but at least to provide some direction to the community and to the business community, this is what we'd like to see here. We've got probably 10 or 12 of those that need to get ironed out. And that'll be a big part of this update because it was something that we did not get done in the last five years and really need to get that accomplished this go-around.
Yeah, and I would say 90% of the plan was remaining intact. The big item, we'll be updating those study areas because they don't have any land use designation, which has gotten, is problematic when you have, working with the business community and landowners. And then just making sure, we want to see the other plans are updating consistent. Look for other inconsistencies we've found in the plan. Things like the agri park wasn't discussed or the nickel plate trail master plan wasn't part of the comp plan back then, and those are things we want to add in. And so there's some things to add to the plan, but it's not going to be nearly as labor-intensive as before. So that's why I think we could still do it within this timeframe and have the update in the summer approved by council as a resolution.
I have a question about the subcommittees. Will there be residents participating in the subcommittees like there was last time?
No, at this point, we're moving with the residents we have as from the steering committee. So there'll be members at our next steering committee meeting. We're going to have them pick which one they'll be a part of, integrated with some council members. And then again, we plan on doing public outreach, some other town halls again. We've robust, we've added more ways of getting comments online through the community, especially through COVID. It's expanded that. So we're going to take those opportunities when the plan's getting close to finalized.
Great, thank you.
I think the one item that was of benefit, just thinking out loud here to Jocelyn's question, that was of value in the first go-around, if I remember correctly, we had HSC students, I think, assigned to each committee. And it was really impactful to hear their perspectives on these committees. So it may not be a bad idea for us to reach out to HSC and see if there's some seniors that would be interested or open. Because I do remember or recall them having some pretty insightful comments about what they thought were, you know, what, why would they want to come back to Fishers kind of conversation?
I agree. And really, the center of my question was also making sure the diversity of our residences are represented in some of these conversations. So working with the students would be a great step.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I may, I found when we did this last time, I chaired the land use committee. We had a couple of students from HSC and the beauty of, it was the unvarnished truth with them and it was fabulous to get their perspective because they had no axe to grind. It was just great to have, whoops, have them as a part of that process and just get some really good feedback.
Tony, I have a question. With regard to the special study areas, do we actually have data from the last five years in terms of those areas? Like, anything that we've collected to kind of guide us in terms of how those areas look like now?
Well, we'll look at some existing condition reports, look at some of the traffic numbers. We'll look at some of the environmental. We're putting together, each site will have their own plans that show how close they are to certain amenities. So that will hopefully help guide us with what land use makes sense, you know? And again, as Scott said, these are broader policies, right? Should this be residential versus commercial, not designing a site plan with specific, you know, building scales and footprints and parking lots? It's real high level, but we're going to provide enough, hopefully, information to gear that discussion.
And hopefully, we will have some updated, broader demographic data, economic development data, housing data, so you can have a better understanding of kind of where we sit with all those broad policies so that then you can make decisions on the individual community conversations.
And with some of those groups, we have had projects that have come up or new developments. So as part of Tony's team, they'll be sharing what's happened to date. So to your point of current changes of ownership or certain plans that are underway, that'll be discussed at that high level as well.
So we look forward to getting that dinner kicked off first and foremost, so we can have kind of a broad discussion in that. Our goal for this group will be to draw out some common themes beyond, you know, getting the specifics of, oh, we'd like to, so one common goal would be, we really got to get these special study areas done. That might be one. What we want to draw out of all of you is what do you want to see out of that comp plan? What are the things that we would view as a definition of success if we got these five or six key things? Because that'll help drive our staff's work on this going forward. So just as you start to think about this leading up to that event. With that, I'd like to move into exec session if we could, and we'll head upstairs. Everybody here can stay here and we'll go from there. Thank you.
This meeting is no longer being recorded or transcribed.
I know you're going to be here tonight, joining the party.
I am here for the party.
I would have helped you out or anything if you needed it. I didn't know. Did you get, did Jennifer get you everything?
Um, I have, I have extra signature sheets. Like, I was missing one last time.
Yeah.
So I printed extra, thinking I could erase the resolution order or whatever. But I know, I think I'm good to go.
Well, if something pops up, just ask Scott.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks.
Welcome to the audio conferencing center. If you're the meeting organizer, press star now. You are now joining the meeting. Please wait for the leader to admit you to the meeting. Thank you for your patience. You are now joining the meeting.
Sorry, sorry. She went to visit her sister. Yeah, she's, um, yeah. I'm the stand-in, maybe three times a year. Yeah. I don't mind.
That's a little more excitement, right?
Yeah, it's nice to know what's going on.
Yeah.
Well, I saw an animal born that was for the six o'clock. We could have a cage in front of that. No, it was a dangerous or totally dangerous. And I, yeah, and actually, um, that's a scary thing because of bullying on that, potentially dangerous. So if they do away with that, then there's no more, because there's not necessarily restrictions with that bullying. If they do away with it, then we are either nothing or dangerous. We've taken away that middle ground. And actually, the owner of the dog, who was in on drywall, which his dog was in a season of dangerous, which is a large difference. I wouldn't want to get through it. Uh, we had a German Shepherd for years, big German Shepherd. And he was awesome, but he's a guard dog. And we ended up, my husband ended up being allergic. And for a year, every Wednesday, every Wednesday for an entire year, he went to community and got four big shots. Then he was saying, we had to get rid of him. But we had him for four years. But we were the same way and we were the house where we had the electric fence and he was, we trained him. I mean, he was constantly training. But he would get, and he loved people. And people, I mean, he was a dog. And so he would go sit right on the edge where he wouldn't get stopped. People would be walking to drive him aside, well, he'd just sit there and then go across the street. And I was, ours was too, but he, I mean, you know, he'd knock twice on it with three or four times. He gets excited and jumps up and down and goes to the door. But I get it. We actually were able to recall our Shepherd to Milwaukee County, the tire, he might have to go to the church, Shepherd at nine years old, stomach cancer. And they wanted to get the dogs at Mount Kentucky. So we worked that way. He's up in northern, in Atlanta, Indiana, and lots of rooms around. But it, I mean, I've heard some stories of dogs who eat or anything like this, but you don't even know.